Good morning, everyone. It's 9:00 AM. I'd like to welcome everybody to the work session for September the 20th, 2021 of the Limestone County Commission. Ellen, do we have any public comment?
We do. Lisa Henson.
If you don't mind, may I step right over to microphone, please?
Thank you, guys. I just wanted to attend this meeting today. I had gotten notice that Phase Two for Kennesaw subdivision was commencing, and we're here to express concern, and we were curious, and Mark was nice enough to speak to us about the drainage issues or where things were going to drain on Phase Two and future phases. Very interested since it's our land is to the west of that. And in Phase One, we weren't exactly really happy with a drainage pond that drains directly into our front yard. And, you know, it was, I guess, fortunate that it rained eight inches yesterday. So it's very obvious that the water problems today. But that was the main thing. We just want to get on record that we are concerned. I think Mark did clear up Phase Two, and it's a, you know, I think we're fairly satisfied that Phase Two doesn't pose any problems, but I think he is going to talk with some other people to see if there's anything we can do about Phase One. Is there anything you'd like to add? This is my husband, but mainly just to get on record that we are concerned about our property and what's going on around us.
All right.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ellen, do we have anything else?
We do not.
Thank y'all for coming. Y'all have a good day.
Bye-bye.
All righty. So with no more public comment, we'll move on. First thing on here is a resolution order, which will be able to approve a resolution to authorize the chairman to enter a contract with Contech Engineering Solutions in the amount of $67,025.65 to construct and deliver a large box culvert required to improve drainage conditions along Chapman Hollow Road. Said resolution is due to the Limestone County receiving a community development block grant, and this is in LaDona's district. He's not here today, but Mark gave everything, touched on that.
This is that bid that we had a few weeks ago that we didn't receive any, we didn't receive any bids on, and so I negotiated with Contech to, to build, make to give us a price for them to build and deliver this culvert, and then it will be installed on, it'll be installed on Chapman Hollow Road. So it's all part of that grant. This price comes in below what was estimated for that culvert, so shouldn't be any issues there.
Do we, do we do the installation on it?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be installed by District Four personnel.
Okay.
I figure they'll need that excavator.
It's a, it's a possibility, but it's not, it's not a matter of weight. It's a, because this is a metal box culvert.
Oh, okay.
So it's not a matter of weight. More reach, maybe. So it just depends on whether or not they can, they've got the equipment to reach where they need to.
Okay.
A metal box culvert. Okay. I don't see that.
Okay. It's, it comes with, with foundations and everything ready to pour. So you set the foundations. It has a rebar and everything in place. And so then you set them in place, and you pour concrete in the foundations, and then it has, it has a, it's already built so that you're ready to bolt the culvert to it. So, so you just build it, kind of build it in place.
All right. When is the, when is the delivery on this? What time?
It'll be eight weeks. They said about eight weeks from, from the time that they received a signed worker agreement, or I say agreement, but work order.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any more discussion with any more questions? All right. Moving on, under contracts, agreements, and grants, and Lord, we've got a bunch of them today. So hang with me on this. First one would be to approve a grant awarded to the, by Alabama Mountain Rivers and Valleys, which is RC&amp;D, and Commissioner Sammott's on that council. We want to thank them for all they do. To build ADA compliant bathrooms at the Limestone County Farmer's Market, and we were awarded an amount of $12,000. And if approved, the commission agrees to pay the remainder of the total project estimated of 24.5, and the county will pay up to 12.5. And Sonya can answer this. A lot of that will be in kind and stuff like that, right, Sonya?
The, the labor.
Yeah, the labor stuff will be part of our agreement to it. So it'll be to do away with those little bitty rinky-dank bathrooms, and then we're going to build a bathroom outside there divorced from the farmer's market, so.
That's good.
And it will be something that can be opened for events and other things if we ever do decide to do something with that parking lot down there. So, so that's what it's about. So any discussion, any questions? All right. Next on here will be to approve a grant agreement between the Alabama Department of Youth Services for funding of the diversion program through the juvenile probation officer. The funding is for $49,756, which begins October 1st of 2021 through September the 30th of 2022. There's no county match, and all of these are just things that we routinely have to redo every year. Any discussion with that?
Is that, is that one bid, two bids, bid and a half?
I think it's one.
That's one.
It's one bid, I believe.
And we can rent it out if we're not using?
No, the bed was last week. We approved it.
This doesn't have anything to do with your beds. This is a diversion program to keep the kids out of DYS, like down in Mount Meeks.
Oh, okay.
We, we approved the bed last week.
I was thinking of Tuscon view adjacent.
Yeah. Well, I thought this right here, I honestly thought that's about how much it is. Yeah. So I couldn't remember.
I think we approved it last meeting or meeting before one. I think it was, well, the one bed was last week.
Yeah. Okay.
Now, this grant is for in-home detention, ankle monitors. It's for outpatient therapy for drug abuse, and it's for community service that they have to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think number five kind of goes along with that, but a lot of these go together with that same grant, so.
Yeah.
All right. Number three would be to approve a MOU with the Family Life Center Incorporated to provide outpatient substance abuse treatment and service for adolescents referred by the juvenile court's officer. The MOU begins October the 1st of 2021 and ends September the 22, uh, September 30th of 2022 for a total cost of $15,000 to be paid with funding from the Alabama Department of Youth Services grant. Any discussion with this one? All right. No discussion with that one. We'll be moving on to number four will be to approve an agreement with Katie Henson for the position of county services coordinator with the juvenile probation officer's diversion program. The agreement begins October the 1st of 2021 and ends September the 30th of 2022. The cost is $25,974 to begin being paid, being funded with Alabama Department of Youth Services grant, and this is, she does this every year. It's just carry on from every year. So any, any discussion with her?
Boy, they made all these long for you to read.
I know it. And they, they just don't know how I struggle doing all this. You did that. Thank you, Sonya. I need you to thank for this. Thank you. So if I read something backwards or upside down, I get accused here. It's on Sonya.
We're going to blame you on her.
Sonya, it's on you today. All right. Number five on here would be to approve agreement with Tracking Solutions for Electronic Monitoring Service with Juvenile Probation Officer Diversion Program. The agreement begins October the 1st of 2021 and ends September the 30th of 2022 for an approximate cost of $7,000 to be paid with funding from the Alabama Department of Youth Services grant, and that's your ankle monitoring for that situation. Any discussion with this? All right. Number six will be to approve service agreement with Mental Health Centers of North Alabama Incorporated to continue providing an onsite juvenile court liaison for 40 hours a week, for 40 hours per week. And, and the agreement begins October the 1st of '21 and ends September the 30th of '22 with a cost of $58,905 annually. Any discussion with that? All right. Somebody blowing at us. Number seven will be to approve a license agreement to allow recovery services of DeKalb County Incorporated, the privilege to enter Sweet C located at 503 South Jefferson Street for the purpose of providing services in conjunction with the Limestone County Community Corrections Program for an amount of a thousand, for a fee of $1,000. This agreement begins October the 1st of '21 and goes through September the 30th of '22. Any discussion with that? All right. No discussion with that. Number eight will be to approve a court referral officer contract between the Alabama District Courts, Alabama Directors of Courts, and the Alba, and the Limestone County Community Corrections Program. And the contract begins October the 1st of '21 and ends September the 30th of '22 with a, with a maximum amount of $31,920. Any discussion with that? I'm going to keep on. I'm going to feel like a literature teacher. Number nine will be to approve the animal service, animal control service contract with Athens Limestone Animal Shelter for a monthly cost of $46,540.63. This contract begins October the 1st of '21 and ends September the 30th of '22. Any discussion with it?
I'd like to speak to that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, go ahead.
I don't know that, you know, I'm all for animals. That seems like a, a large fee there. That's 550,000 bucks a year. And on top of that, we pay 200,000, 210,000, I think, to animal control. So we've got three quarters of a million dollars a year in animal control services. And I checked with Morgan County. They do theirs with 4.5 animal control with 4.5 people for $318,000. So I'm not sure what Lauderdale County does. I haven't checked with them. But I wish we would study this issue and maybe adopt Morgan County as a model for us. Anybody have any problem with that?
I do. I have a huge problem with it. I'm, I'm not going to pick any county and do a model by some other county. Just because it's being done that way there, it doesn't mean it's being done the right way. You know, this, you've had, since November, you took office, right? And this right here is something that came up, and you've known about this all this time, and now you just decide you're going to come in here. We, we don't get the option of being able to pick and choose of the luxury when we're going to pass these things or discuss them. This is a law, okay?
That you have to have an animal shelter. I'm aware of that.
Oh, yeah. And it's a law that we've got to pass it by the 31st of this month, too. So it's not something we can just decide a week before, and you, you've had almost 10 months to be able to look over it, and the meeting that we're going to do it is when you want to stand up and, and voice your concerns? That, that's fantastic. Voice it three months ago so we can, we can have a discussion and figure out what it is. You have no idea what the services are. You have no idea that Morgan County also has one in Hartsel that you didn't count into that figure, and that's inside Morgan County. You didn't figure in that Lauderdale County and some of those places over there have built brand-new ones, and they can't afford to put light bulbs in some of the offices because they've overextended themselves. If we have to have our own Limestone County veterinarian that works under the county commission, which you have to have one in the county, and then we have a building, and then we have to have that building that's got to have people working at it, $500,000 a year ain't going to touch it. So this right here is a three-year contract, from what I understand. I was going to ask that question to begin with. It says here it ends September 30th of 2022.
It's a 12-month contract.
It's a three-month con, I mean, a three-year contract. It's time for the three-year contract to be up.
Three-year contract?
Yes. This is the three-year contract.
Is that correct?
Um...
He hasn't submitted a contract, has he?
We've got it. We've got, we've got to let him sign it, but the contract that, if I'm not mistaken, is a three-year contract.
We have done three years previously.
Correct.
Yeah.
We're talking about the new one.
Yeah, but this one is for three years, right? Because we just ended a three-year contract, so the next one, the contract is for three years.
We need it to be for three years. I'll need to change it.
We've got the option to extend it. Is that what it is?
I'm sure we could make an amendment to that.
I hope that the per, well, we may not, we, I, I don't know what we may need to do right here then, because they may not agree to just doing it one year. I mean, the contract is said three years. Since it started with David Seibert, it was a three-year contract cycle. It wasn't, it never was a year. That's from what I understand.
Y'all tell me what you do.
Mark?
Well, it, it, it ends the end of this month, right?
It does.
Well, I mean, all honesty, I haven't seen the draft that's being proposed. I think it's, if I'm not mistaken, contracts in the past were multi-year, and we had in some escalation clauses, the last issue being a midterm, if you will, increase. So, but I'll be, if there's a draft, it's, what's there proposed, I'll be glad to take a look at it between the work session and the meeting.
Yeah, we prob, we might need to do that because I, I don't know what we'll do if it doesn't pass, or if it's not the contract. They refuse to sign it because thinking it's a three-year contract. I mean, that's a, that's a lot of money from our side, and a lot of money from the person's side that will be signing the contract, too.
All right. We got a question here. The day is, do we want to, well, do y'all want to approve the one-year contract, or we want to strike it, or we want to, how we want to do it? Dr. Pittman did not submit a contract?
He did not.
He did not submit a contract. So I guess we were just taking the notion that he would, he would allow a one-year contract if he...
He has not done a contract. I was in the discussion with him. I talked with Ellen. I talked with Emily. I went to him and asked him, it was during a difficult time, if he would take it with no increase, what he was getting paid. The last contract had a percentage of each year 11% or something like that, where he went up over a period of three years.
I believe that was an amendment done to the original contract.
Yeah, that was an amendment to the red. We proved that.
No, no. The amendment to the original contract was just something he just came in and asked for. The original contract called for, year one, it was X amount. Year two, it was based on the percentage, and year three, it was based on the percentage. What we got this last time was something he came in and just said with COVID and that stuff was, where we just increased it at a, at a cost. It didn't have anything to do with the percentage. So that's what I'm, that's my concern. But anyway, he said level funding is what he said he would accept if we brought him the contract, so.
He has not been in front of us with no contract period.
No, no.
So I guess the best thing to do is strike the whole thing altogether, then start over. I mean, I, it's one of those things. I mean, I don't know.
Well, when's our next meeting?
I mean, we don't have one until the first of the month.
We haven't got two weeks left in this.
We won't have animal care services in either.
Yeah. I mean, we could even, we could either offer this first one-year contract and see if he don't sign it and go from there, or whatever. I mean, it would be the, because he hadn't submitted us a contract to even go through it.
I don't know that we submit the contract. I think we, I mean, that he does. I think we offer the service, and he decides if he wants to take it.
I guess we can offer him this one-year deal right now until we can amend it later if we want to.
At work?
I mean, if, I mean, I'm fine with that one-year deal, and just see what happens from there. And if, and if we want to investigate, looking at some other option, that gives us one year from today.
Well, I wish, if we can, we do the contract, I wish we'd, apparently, we just give him a bulk fee for bulk services with no identification of what he's doing.
That's incorrect. See, what they do is we have this thing called the SNPs program across the state of Alabama where they neuter and spay animals. So that's part of the program, too. The other part of the program is, it's broken down with like utilities, because we use his services. It's broken down with the amount of employees that he gets, and then it's broken down to the vet fee where the vets get paid. There's also a line item in there that shows how much medicine is used, how much euthanization medicine is used. So it's not just a block number out there. I mean, you know, it's, it, if you look at it, and, and you, you've had the option to be able to look at it, it has it broken down. All of the stuff does, from the budget to this, too. It, it tells you what they're asking for and what they're wanting, and, and then we decide if we give it to them or not. So that, that's how we did this. We don't just randomly, before you got here, just sling money out there for somebody because they asked for it.
Right. In 2019, and I guess some, maybe I do need to understand better, he had 3,413 total turned in animals. Well, our animal, Limestone County's animal control people turned in 976. So that means that the public and the city turned in the difference of 2,500 animals, I guess, whatever that figures out to. I would like just some kind of accounting and understanding of that.
It, we're, we're not doing it based on what our employees turn in. We're doing it based on the, the county. Like if, say, Joe Smith has 50 cats at his barn, and he decides he's going to trap those and take those up there. It's just because our animal control didn't take them up there, they're our responsibility when they take them up there.
Yeah, I didn't say it was. I said that, the difference there, somebody turned them in, or the city turned them in.
Well, the city has their own, they have their own contract with them that, that we don't have. They have animal control, too.
This figure, I assume, included all animals turned in to him by the city.
I don't have that in front of me, so I don't, I don't know what that number is. I mean, I, I've got it, but I didn't bring it with me today.
Yeah. I, that's, that's just things I would like to understand and have documented. All right. And I think we were charged 270, in his little P and L statement, we were charged $277,000 for spayed and neutered, which my understanding is, we just spay and neuter the ones that are offered out for adoption. Is that correct?
They're all offered out for adoption.
Well, the ones that are adopted, I guess.
Yeah.
They don't, he don't spay and neuter every one that he gets.
Not until they're, not until they're adopted.
Not until they're adopted.
Yeah. But our euthanization has gone down, I forget, I, like I said, I didn't bring any of this with me.
Well, in 2020, he did, we did 780. Morgan County did 825. So apparently, we're about close to even on that.
And that's counting the Hartsel animal services, too?
That is the har, the one in Hartsel.
So the one in, the one in Morgan County is different.
Uh, I thought the Morgan County was in Hartsel.
No, I think there's actually two locations. There's one in Morgan County, and there's one in Hartsel, too. Yeah.
Well, that says Morgan County Animal Shelter in Hartsel. I, I don't know.
Yeah. I don't know. I think they've got more than one location, but I can get you all that information, or Ellen can get you that information. But my concern was, is today, if we've got another plan where somebody can come in and do it cheaper, it's crazy for us not to do it. The problem is, when we have, we put these things out for bid, we have no one provide a bid except for Dr. Pittman. We've actually gone and asked others to put in for it, but nobody ever does. So that's, that's where you are in this situation, and with us having to have animal services provided, that's a state law. I don't want to end up like DeKalb County and other counties have ended up with lawsuits from animal control and just a headache all the way across the board. If it costs that much money to run it ourselves, or it costs that much money for a private person to run it, we've got to have it.
I agree.
That's it. We've got, we've got to have it. So that's, that's neither here nor there. I guess we'll see if they'll sign a contract for a year.
So I mean, I mean, that's where we're at today. I mean, I mean, we got to have it out of control services with no, regardless, and the end of the month is here. So we're going to approach him with a year contract and see how that goes. And I mean, if it, I mean, if it don't, I mean, we'll have to do something different, but I mean, that's the, uh...
Well, it's going to be a very difficult, do something different.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but that's what we're offering today.
It's going to be, it's going to be a bigger headache than we've had since we've been in office. I can promise you that.
And that gives us a year to, if anybody wants to explore doing something different, we got a year to do it. I mean, that's fine with that. Everybody in agreement with that? You fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So as it stands, we're going to offer him a contract for one year to see if he accepts it, because he didn't present us with anything. So that gives us an opportunity to, he may not even, he may not even be interested anymore. I don't know. That'd be bad if he's, if he's not right at the moment.
He was last week.
Okay. Well, I hadn't talked to him, but anyways, he hadn't reached out to me in any way, so. But regardless, that's what we're going to offer, and we're going to offer it the same price and everything. So for one year to see where it goes. All right. So everybody in agreement with that? We're good? All right. Moving on to number 10 will be to approve a consulting agreement with Cobb, Allen, and Hall to assist with strategic benefit planning, design, funding, administrative, and communications with respect to the employee benefit program. And this is the people that came and spoke to us earlier, and this is no cost. This is something they just offer. They, they collect through the benefits company. So it's just to, to help a lease out and stuff. We have open enrollments, too.
No cost?
Yeah. It's, they, they collect through the benefit companies. It's a, um, there's a...
I got you. I got you.
Yeah, it does not, they don't collect from, it don't cost us anything or the employee anything. They collect it through the, it's just to help, they, they could help them get benefits that they're normally getting and things like that, so. So when we do have open enrollment, they will have a, they do it for the, I think with the City of Athens and some other places around. They do it with Huntsville, I know, and they do it with several other, they just, um, but they have their, this, and several of them have worked in county government before, and they know how all the benefit packages work and all, kind of can help us with other issues, too, so.
Yeah.
So any more discussion with that? All right. Number 10 is done. Moving on, we have no budget revisions, no merch purchases, and no board appointments, award of bids. We have none. Personnel action. First thing on here will be to approve to hire Corey Kraut as a corrections officer effective September the 29th, depending on drug screening. Any discussion with him? All right. No discussion with him. Number two will be to hire, it says Trenton Simon, but he goes by Trent as an EMA official. So officer, anybody discussion with that? All right. And the third one will be to approve to hire Aaron Tyler as a collections clerk over here in the revenue commissioner's office. Any discussion with her? No discussion with her. And number four will be to hire Joshua Carter as equipment operator one in engineering, and he is one of our, been working temporarily. So welcome Josh to the crew. Any discussion with him? All righty. And then we have four merit increases listed. Anybody have anybody with anybody with a merit increases? All right. No discussion with any of the merit increases at this time. Engineer's report, Mr. Massey?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have eight subdivisions for your consideration today. We have DE White Farm subdivision. This is a replat of Track One, so it's minor for preliminary and final. It'll create two lots out of one in District Four at 7955 Tommy Hill Road. We have Hobbs Park subdivision. This is a minor, so it'll be for preliminary and final. Three lot, creating three lots in District One. It's at the northwest corner of Hobbs Loop Lane and Hobbs Loop Road intersection. We have Carl K. Anderson Estates. This is a replat of Tracks Eight and Nine, so it's minor for preliminary and final, creating four lots out of the two in District Four. This is on Sewell Road, approximately 600 feet west of Edgewood Road. We have L and C Estates. This is a replat of Track One, so it's minor preliminary and final, creating two lots in District Two. This is the northeast corner of Harold Street and Phyllis Street intersection. We have the Estates at Piney Chapel Phase Two, minor for preliminary and final, creating 10 lots in District One. This is a northwest corner of Crutcher Road and Piney Chapel Road intersection. And then we have the Estates at Piney Chapel Phase Three. This is a minor for preliminary and final, creating 19 lots in District One. It's at the northwest corner of Piney Chapel Road and Crutcher Road intersection. I think there was a typo there. Kennesaw Creek subdivision Phase Two, major for preliminary, 32 lots in District Two. This is south side of Nick Davis Road, approximately 1,900 feet west of Jones Road. And then we have Lonny Dale subdivision Phase Three. This is a major for final approval. We've, we took it off the agenda last meeting because they didn't have everything in place. So they, they've done that now. So it's, uh, final approval on 19 lots in District Two at the intersection of St. John Road and Newby Chapel Road.
I think Lonny Dale subdivision has been on ever since I've been on the commission. That name has come up, Lonny Dale subdivision, ever since I've been here. And District Three didn't have any, the largest grown district, we didn't have any there.
Two, two meetings in a row.
Two meetings in a row.
Daryl's taken them away.
Daryl's taken. You got any discussion with any of the subdivisions on here? And you did, you are going to, you did get the drainage issue straightened out.
Uh, as far as the Kennesaw Creek Phase Two, that really, there's no water leaving the site, going to their property. But like I said, they're, they do have some questions about some other phases, so I'll address that with them.
Who is the developer there? Is that Daryl Sides?
No, that is not Sides. I, uh, let's see. It just says Nick Davis LLC. It's a, it's a group that owns the property. I think Grayson Carter is doing the, doing the dirt work. MRL Engineering's the engineer, so.
All right. Any more discussion with any of the subdivisions, or anything we got from Mark? All right. So another business, we'll have to approve to sell on GovDeals, one Ford Pacer from the council and agency. Any discussion with that? No discussion with that. We have no schedule of public hearing, report of officers, Commissioner Sammott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to mention one thing right quick, if you would, for the work session. The box culvert on Old Schoolhouse, the contractor got started Friday on it, got the bottom poured. Thank goodness, because it would have gotten washed out. He got it in early enough that it did set up, and it looked good yesterday. I went by and checked it out, but he was planning on having that back he was planning on having that back together by the middle of this week, I think, but it looks like the rain's gonna affect it, but, uh, we'll get it, get that road opened up as soon as we can, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you, sir, we can't help what Mother Nature does to it.
No, no.
Commissioner Markstev?
I don't have anything.
Thank you, sir, Commissioner Black?
Uh, yeah, I have something, I'd like to thank, uh, uh, y'all for the meeting and the kind words while I was going, when y'all, uh, adopted the budget. Um, I wish I'd have been here, uh, I was unable to with my mother-in-law passing away. Uh, the one thing I want to say is, is when it comes time for the budget time, that is something that we, we have to pass, that is something that we have to do. It, if there are concerns or anything like that, it probably needs to be brought up amongst all of us at some point, what the, what those concerns are, if, if they're with Emily, Emily needs to discuss those concerns with us, if they're with Ellen and any of the concerns that someone to let them have, let us know, too. It's not appropriate to go to one other commissioner and, and try to talk those people into understanding why the budget shouldn't be what it is, and maybe get them to vote uh, along with you, that is, that is not an opportunity to do that, the opportunity presents itself when we have a chance to vote, when we have a discussion, perhaps to have that discussion, and someone else is sitting at the, at the table can have that discussion with you. Uh, it, it's sometimes easy, as I've said with the other commissioner before, it's easy to, to, to be that, uh, devil's advocate and stand up for the right of the common good and all that stuff when you know somebody else is gonna do the job and get it done. So if the, just for future reference, if there's ever any concerns about anything on the agenda, anything on the meetings, anything on the budget, uh, maybe I don't see it right, so it would be good if someone, if you had a concern, bring it up with all of us, and that way we may agree with you. So, uh, but that's something that needs to be discussed when it comes to budget with Emily, and Emily comes back to us. I never knew that there was any conflict on, uh, on the budget, I thought it was a good budget. Uh, it's pretty much a three percent cost of living increase, uh, it's, uh, the Sheriff's Department budget was, was really good, it was not level funding, but I mean, the, the cost is, most of the time, the, the cost in, uh, insurance and employment and paying, so I, I just, just for future reference, it would just really be good to make our organization look like we're, we're, we're running as a machine and we don't have anything in it that's just gonna make the machine break down, because we've got to be continuing to have business, so. With that being said, thank you very much, uh, thank y'all for your, uh, concerns about my mother-in-law, I really do appreciate it, and thank y'all for, uh, for passing the budget.
Let the record be known, Commissioner Townsend is absent today, um, I wanna discuss a little something right here, and, uh, and I mean, it'll be named, me and Mark's been talking about it, and I wanna get y'all's feel on it, you know, and it's kinda something to be thinking about. Um, you know, one of the biggest concerns we always get is safety of employees and stuff, and we, me and Mark has had some conversations with Emily and been talking about a plan to come up with. How would y'all, I mean, to reach out to y'all and kinda come up with some ideas? Um, you know, one of the things that we get the most calls on is like stripes on the road. How would y'all feel about us, um, maybe in the future, this next year, looking into coming up with a paint truck and a way to paint our own striping, because, you know, that, the cost of doing business is so high, you know, to get the contractor and to getting it done, I mean, that's the, the number one thing is, is to getting it done, you cannot get a contractor to do it. And, um, I think that we could probably somewhat get into doing it ourself if, if, if some of y'all might, it would require us getting, uh, another employee or so in engineering to help with this situation, we would have to have a, buy a paint truck and stuff, but it's just something for y'all to mull over and where I can get all y'all together, where we can kinda have a conversation about it, so.
I, it sounds good, I mean, we've all talked about it, I don't want it to look like it looked in the past when the county did it, because even the ones that drove the truck and the ones that was doing the painting said they looked like the Three Stooges. Shaw, Shaw Road looked like a snake going down Shaw Road going to Nuker Plant, and they'll let you know, it was an old truck and it had play in the wheel, so I wanna make sure whoever it is, is on that paint truck, every time we get on that paint truck, they're not gonna have to go over here and be on the asphalt machine, or they're not gonna have to go over here and be on the roller. Their job is to be trained on that paint truck, cause it is embarrassing. To see those lines going down the road.
That's one of my concerns that I voiced, and, and I, and there, there would be growing paints, just like with our paving program, there were.
We'll do those in District One, we'll, we'll paint all the roads that are growing. We'd be glad to get the paint.
Yeah, we'll put it on the dollar, you know.
Just squirt it out somewhere.
But, but we do, but like I said, there would be growing paints, uh, I have spoken with Baldwin County, Baldwin County's been doing this for, for several years. I mean, I think that they have just purchased their fourth or fifth paint truck, so, I mean, you're talking twenty-plus years.
Yeah.
Um, and they, they offered to, if we, if we, um, did decide to go this route, they offered to, to help us train our personnel, whoever it is we wanna do, that, that we would put in place to do that, so, so I mean, there, it's, uh, there's other, there's one other.
I'm gonna give you a list of people from my district that are a no. They will not be doing it.
But, but, I mean, if we went, uh, went, went that route, I definitely would want to make sure that we, we picked the right people, the people that are gonna take care of the truck, the people that are gonna to, to pay attention and really put a lot of effort into doing it right. Um, instead of it just being a job, it needs to be something that they, they feel like they're proud of when they get done, and so. And somebody with that personality and that mindset would be very important to put with, put on that crew, so. So, um, we, there's a couple of options that we've, that, that I've looked into, uh, so we'll, I, as, as they kind of, as we kinda work through it, I can hash it out with each of you individually, or, or, or we, I can bring it back up in a, in a session and discuss it.
Well, you know, I was just thinking, you know, I mean, you know, that's something that we can show a difference in each district.
Oh, yeah.
Because we took a little budget, a little money, you know, I was thinking, you know, if we budgeted just a little bit of money for it, you know, and, you know, it doesn't take but one lawsuit or one, you know, one day, you know, one, one life saved, it's worth it, you know, and I mean, it's a, that's like, that's something that we could, you know, all districts, you know, if we get on a good rotational area program, you know, it could be, you know, if we can do a hundred miles in each district, you know, a year or something, you know, I mean, you could get it up there to where you could get it done pretty, we might not do that number, but I'm talking about, it would be, uh, if we could do a couple of hundred miles a year, totally.
Just, just an idea of the cost, as far as, um, we're, we're paying about two thousand dollars a mile for a standard, just a basic paint stripe. Um, we can do a high build paint stripe for about nine hundred dollars a mile, or the cost of the materials. Um, so there's, so that's, that's kinda the difference in the price, uh, so it really, our big, our big investment would be the, the truck and the personnel, so. But once we have those, then as far as materials go, I mean, we could, we could be doing four times the mileage of what we've been doing.
I was, I was, uh, shocked at, I got to look at it, the cost per striping in it, I noticed that the temporary stripes right after paving was more than the permanent striping, and we talked, and you said that's a matter of convenience to have them. Would that do away with the temporary, can?
We could do it ourself, that would be, we would do it all ourself.
The permanent down, so.
Does this truck have thermo plating?
Well, it's not thermo, it, what I would be looking at would be a paint, paint truck that's got high build, it's a high build paint.
Yeah.
So it's about fifty percent more paint goes down, um, than what currently goes down, so it's a thicker paint, has more beads in it, so the reflective beads that you see, so, um, so it would, it would not be thermo, um, you should get about seven, eight years out of a thermo stripe. You're gonna get, out of a high build paint, you're gonna get about four, four and a half. But if we can get on a rotation to where we're touching every road every four, four and a half years, then, and, and we should be able to do that for about a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in materials a year. And we're spending about that now in, um, paying a contractor to do it, so.
And not getting it done.
And not getting it done, it takes six, eight months from the time we sit, give them the purchase order till they show up.
I don't know if we ever got it, but there was a road in your district, it was might near a year before they ever got to it, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, I've got one that they still hadn't gotten to, and he does, too.
So you're probably paying twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars' worth of temporary striping that you come back and do it again.
And then there is the temporary stripe cost, which I didn't even add in there, I'm just talking about the permanent stripe cost.
And then the tempor, the temporary stripe, that's only done in certain locations, like they won't put it down on Snake Road, I, I.
Yeah, we've got, we've got them scheduled to come and put temporary on Snake.
But like other roads that we pave, we don't have it. It's not in there, we don't even, we don't even stripe it.
If it's not currently striped, if it's a chip seal road or something, that's not.
Ben's aisle two years ago, I mean, it was two and a half miles long, we never painted it, I mean, because we just didn't have the money to do it.
And a lot of these secondary roads, you won't run a side stripe, would've run a middle stripe, you know, and I mean, it's just a.
And it would give us that flexibility to be able to do it anyway.
Yeah.
So, I mean, like I said, there, there's some, definitely some positives, um, the negatives are that upfront cost, um, but, uh, and, and the continued cost of the personnel, and where does that personnel come from, because we, we gotta be very selective in, in who we put with that crew.
And for the record, Emily told me I had to come up with a plan before we could discuss this, so that's why we're all together coming up with a plan, so anyways.
It's definitely something we need.
I mean, it's something, I mean, I think that as way the county's growing, and, you know, as much traffic as we have on a lot of these secondary road stuff, it's getting to where, you know, that's becoming a major issue, and I've always wanted a work session to last an hour, so we're almost there.
We're almost there.
No, with all that, we'll, we'll, we'll take a.
Chairman, before you, uh, uh, recess, we'd, we'd like to add, um, a Caterpillar reclamer for District Four to be sold at our GovDales.
Okay, so we are gonna sell, okay.
Ladon requested that Friday, I think it was, that we considered we had that.
Okay, so let me, uh, for the record, on, under the, uh, other business here, I think it is, um.
Caterpillar reclaim.
Yeah, other business, we're gonna sell one Caterpillar reclamer out of District Four on GovDales. All right, anything else? Thank you, everybody, for being here today, and we will recess until ten AM, thank y'all.